Counselor De La Cruz, can you hear me? Counselor De La Cruz, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, we're about to start our meeting. Good evening, today is Tuesday, August 30th, 2022. This is a special Lawrence City Council meeting pursuant to Chapter 20, the Acts of 2020. This meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person in the City Council chamber and remotely. We are on the Zoom link, we're also can be vid- we can be viewed through the digital platforms such as the Facebook Lawrence City Council page and the YouTube Lawrence City Council page. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Levy?
Present.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Present.
Counselor Payano?
Absent.
Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Absent.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Absent.
Counselor De Rosario?
Present.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Absent.
Counselor Infante?
Present.
President LaPlante?
Present, clerk, will you please call the roll for Vice President Reyes?
Vice President Reyes?
Present.
Thank you, we do have a quorum. Will you please rise for a moment of silence? And will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Puerto Rico, a one nation under all, in the name of the Lord, the King and the Son and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, councilors, I do expect a brief meeting, but an important meeting that we get some of these House pleading things before the election taken care of. At this point, we're going to begin the meeting with a couple of items that were referred out of the committee. Oh, before I start that, clerk, will you please call the roll for Counselor Payano?
Counselor Payano?
Present.
At this point, we will ask the the Vice Chair of the Ordinance Committee to please give the committee report for document number 27222.
Thank you, Mr. President. Iron 27222 is a disclosure by the municipal employee Lady Muñez. It was sent to the full council with favorable recommendation, and I make a formal motion.
Motion's been properly made, is there a second? Motion seconded by Counselor De Rosario, discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez? Absent. Counselor De Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes? Absent. Counselor Infante?
Yes.
President LaPlante?
Yes, the motion carries. The next document under committee reports is document 28922. Adam Vice Chair?
Iron 28922 is a disclosure by municipal employee Lisa Moduno. It was sent to the full council with favorable recommendation, and I make a formal motion.
Motion's been made?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes, discussion? Hearing none, these both of these matters, as a reminder, both of these matters are city employees who are providing disclosures so they can work the election coming up on September the 6th. If there's no discussion on this matter, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Infante?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes? Absent. Counselor De Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez? Absent. Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
President LaPlante?
Yes, the motion carries. Councilors, lastly, under new business, we have five items. This, we will do it in this particular order, the very first thing we must do is suspend Rule Number Six, which will dispense with sending these items to, to the, to a committee. And then we will look to, to have an emergency so we can enact this this evening, then followed by a regular vote for either approval or disapproval. The very first document for this evening is document 29122 granting the police chief the authority to assign police officers at the polling places. I put this on the council agenda. I'm looking for a motion to suspend Rule Number Six, is there a motion? Motion by this, by the Council Vice President, seconded by Counselor Payano, discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yeah.
Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez? Absent. Counselor De Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes? Absent. Counselor Infante?
Yes.
President LaPlante?
Yes, the rule is dispensed with. At this point, we are going to declare this item an emergency, document 29122. And under our legislative procedures, Rule 12, we are allowed to do that. The emergency is for the peace, welfare, and convenience of the, of the residents. Quite frankly, this is a new law that has been implemented this year that requires that the city council puts police officers at polling places. And this is statewide law that was instituted this year in time for this election. But the city council does have the authority to shift the responsibility and the obligation to the chief of police, as we have been doing in the past, to then poll the polling structures. So we need to get this done this evening, that's the, that's the emergency for the election coming up on the 6th. So at this point, I'm looking for a motion to declare this item as an emergency by Counselor Payano, seconded by Counselor Levy, discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Infante?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes? Absent. Counselor De Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez? Absent. Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yeah.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
President LaPlante?
Yes, the motion to declare an emergency is adopted. I am now looking for a simple majority, I'm looking for a motion to now adopt this item that will provide the police chief the authority to assign police officers details for the, not only for this year's elections, but also for the 2023 elections. Motion made by Counselor Payano, seconded by Counselor Levy, discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez? Absent. Counselor De Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes? Absent. Counselor Infante?
Yes.
President LaPlante?
Yes, the motion carries, and the police chief now has the authority to designate police officers for the September 6th election and later in November and for next year. Thank you, we also have other business regarding disclosures. We are, we are short of, of city poll wor- not city, we are short of poll workers. And it's, we are at a dire situation in our polling establishments, and we need to get people to work. We have four individuals who are willing to work, they are with the city, and because they are city employees, they must file a disclosure to the city council before they're allowed to go ahead and take this form of employment. The very first one, again, that we're looking for a motion, a motion to suspend Rule Number Six. That's the first motion for document 29222, is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Payano, seconded by Counselor Levy, discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yeah.
Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez? Absent. Counselor De Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes? Absent. Counselor Infante?
Yes.
President LaPlante?
Yes, the motion to suspend the rule is adopted. At this point, we're looking at Rule Number 12, to declare this an emergency, allow these, this individual under 29222, Angelo Núñez, to serve. Is there a motion to declare this an emergency? Motion made by Vice President Reyes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Anna Levy, discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Infante?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes? Absent. Counselor De Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez? Absent. Counsel Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
President LaPlante?
Yes, will you please call the roll for Counselor Selena Reyes?
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Present.
Do you wish to vote present on this matter? Do you wish to vote present on this matter, Counsel? We're voting on document number for an emergency for document two ninety-two twenty-two. Do you?
No, I know what I'm pressing on this iron.
Very good. Okay. At this point, would you please call the roll for Counselor Selena Reyes?
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Very good. At this point, I'm looking for a motion to to for the disclosure for a municipal employee Angelo E. Núñez, who is currently a worker at who is a city greeter here in City Hall to allow him to work the city election. Is there a motion?
Second.
Counselor Pavel Payano. I think I heard Counselor Levy's seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Infante?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor De Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez? Absent. Counsel Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
President La Plante?
Yes, the motion to accept the disclosure for Mr. Núñez is adopted. The next item, again, same circumstances here, document two ninety-three twenty-two disclosure of municipal employee Jalen Hem. I'm looking for a motion to
So move.
to 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 suspend rule number six. It's been made by Counselor Levy. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Payano. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Payano?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez? Absent. Counsel De Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Infante?
Yes.
President La Plante?
Yes, the motion to dismiss rule number six is adopted. Now I'm looking for, again, a rule twelve emergency, again, needing this passed so that we can get the election places as functional as possible. Is there a motion to declare document two ninety-three twenty-two an emergency?
Second.
Made by Counselor Payano, seconded by Counselor Levy. Discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Infante?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel De Rosario?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez is absent. Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Payano?
Yes.
Counsel De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counseler Levy?
Yes.
President La Plante?
Yes, the motion to declare an emergency passes. I'm now looking for a motion to to adopt document number two ninety-three twenty-two. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Counselor Payano, seconded by Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes. Discussion? This is a this individual works in the public health department, and again, she will be, I think, it's a will be working the the election polls. Any discussion on this matter? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counsel De La Cruz?
Yeah.
Counsel Payano?
Yeah.
Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez? Absent. Counsel De Rosario?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Infante?
Yes.
President La Plante?
Yes. Uh, the motion. We we adopted that one, so next document is document number two ninety-four twenty-two. Again, looking for looking for a motion to suspend rule number six.
So move.
Motion made by Counselor Payano, seconded by Counselor Anna Levy. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counseler Levy?
Yes.
Counsel De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Payano?
Yeah.
Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez? Absent. Counsel De Rosario?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Infante?
Yes.
President La Plante?
Yes, the motion to dispense with rule six is adopted. At this point, this is this municipal employee, help me with the pronunciation of the name, Alondra what's the middle name?
Casillas.
Cas- Casillas? Casillas Corporal, who is a city of a la- works for the Lawrence City Library. I'm looking for now for declaring this matter an emergency so she can work the polls. Is there a motion? Motion made by Counselor Levy, seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. Discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Infante?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel De Rosario?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez is absent. Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Payano?
Yeah.
Counsel De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Levy?
Yes.
President La Plante?
Yes, the motion to declare an emergency is adopted. I'm now looking for a motion to to accept this disclosure and allow the 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 library assistant to work at the polls. Motion made by Counselor Levy, seconded by Counselor Payano. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counseler Levy?
Yes.
Counsel De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Payano?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez? Absent. Counsel De Rosario?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Infante?
Yes.
President La Plante?
Yes, the motion carries, and it's adopted. The last item this evening is document number two ninety-five twenty-two disclosure by municipal employee Oscar Oscar Younoa Chusa- Chosa? How am I doing? A little help would be nice. How do you pronounce your last name? Chosa, thank you.
So move.
There's going to be a motion to dispense with the rule number six, and it's been made by Counselor Levy, seconded by Counselor Payano. Discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counseler Levy?
Yes.
Counsel De La Cruz? Counsel De La Cruz?
We walk.
Counsel Payano?
Yeah.
Counsel Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez? Absent. Counsel De Rosario?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Infante?
Yes.
President La Plante?
The chair votes yes. Would you please ask for Counsel De La Cruz's vote on this matter?
Counsel De La Cruz?
Yes.
Rule six is dispensed with. Now looking for an emergency to let this Mr. Chusa works at the at the Recreation Department, and so then now we're looking forward to declaring an emergency to allow him to work the polls. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Counsel Selena Reyes, seconded by Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes. Discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Infante?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel De Rosario?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez? Absent. Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Payano?
Yes.
Counsel De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counseler Levy?
Yes.
President La Plante?
Yes, the motion is adopted. Now the final motion on this evening is a motion to to approve and allow this municipal employee, Mr. Chusa, to work the polls. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Counsel Levy, seconded by Counsel Payano. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counseler Levy?
Yes.
Counsel De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Payano?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Estela Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez? Absent. Counsel De La De Rosario?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Infante?
Yes.
President La Plante?
Yes, the motion carries. If you are one of the city employees that we just accepted, which your disclosure nominations this evening, will you please stand up so we can acknowledge and thank you for for volunteering to work the not volunteering, but to work the election? Thank you. If you're if you're thank you so much for your your willingness to work. We need we we need help on this election. We will need help on September sixth. We will need help in November. If we have folks even preferably outside of City Hall, if we can find them who are willing to work and do it, we will take, we will look, we will we're recruiting, and I'm sure the clerk's office through the the good work of Clerk Richard Reyes is going to try to to train them and make sure they're up to up to speed. So thank you all for for helping us in our time of need. At this point, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
Second.
Sec- a motion made by Counsel Selena Reyes, seconded by Counselor Anna Levy. Discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counseler Levy?
Yes.
Counsel De La Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Payano?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President? Estela Counsel Rodriguez? Absent. Counsel De Rosario?
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Infante?
Yes.
President La Plante?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, Counselors. Thank you all for being here this evening. We do appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Vice President Reyes.